Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the August 19th Regular Board of Education Meeting. Ms. Reed, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner?
Here.
Mrs. Macavina? Mrs. Opaskar is absent. Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stobbe?
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Happy first day of school, everyone. Dr. D.B., you have a call things go over?
I do. So today was first day of school, and Mrs. Maguire and I made it to all the buildings. Great opening at all of the schools. Kids happy, teachers happy. Everyone seemed to be, you know, in great spirits. We had a great opening day with our staff yesterday. Really positive way to start the day. Ron Yance was our keynote speaker, did a fantastic job. Just everything is off to a great start, really positive, and looking forward to continuing that. Just want to share our annual opening day enrollment numbers. We opened with 3,361 students. It's down from 189 from last year on opening day. I do have the one-year and the five-year changes there. And as it's in past years, I'll go over this report more in detail when I do the school report card. The yellow is the one-year change, the green is the five-year change. I do want to just point out, I know there was a lot of question about kindergarten. Kindergarten was only down 30 from last year. So we ended up right around 170, and we started last year about 200.
And everyone got the choice that they...
Everybody, yes. Kindergarten, everybody that wanted a full day got full day, anybody that wanted half-day got half-day. I'll share more about birth counts and how that's affecting our future enrollment classes. This trend is likely to continue for the next couple of years of decreasing enrollment. All right. On the horizon, new 5'8" middle school opening. Our architects spent time with the administrators at our administrative retreat on August 4th. We have our facilities committee. We have about 40 members between community and staff members. They'll be meeting at 4:30 on September 8th to talk about the new middle school. The architects will give an overview of the plan, the process for getting input. Then we have a very important visioning session with our grades 5 through 8 staff. That's actually a half-day visioning session with the architects. It'll be the chance, and then I let the staff know this about a week or so ago because I wanted them to start thinking, but their opportunity to provide input in things that are important to them as we design a new middle school. So we wanted to make sure we hear all of their voices. And then knowing that this building is not just here for a short time, but here for a long time, we have an important community visioning session, which will be from 9:00 to 1:00 on September 30th in this room. And we are in the process of making sure we get a wide representation of stakeholders and information on that. Those invitations will probably be going out after Labor Day, but we're working on getting our list together now. So it's really exciting, a lot of great things.
I would just add that the architect firm is planning on giving a board update at the October meeting on all of these meetings and the input that they receive, just so that you're aware.
We've had several things in the pipeline academically this year. Ohio has a big push for AI. Actually, if a couple of you have students at Ohio State, you might know that Ohio State is now requiring AI be incorporated into every single one of their courses this year. We are a little bit ahead of the game. We had an AI committee last year. We already have a toolkit up and running for our teachers. All districts are required to have a policy in place for AI before the end of the school year. We currently have a policy. I'm sure we'll be enhancing it. But we're focusing on the positives of AI and teaching kids how to utilize AI responsibly and productively. And we're also doing the same thing with our staff. So we don't want people to see AI as the enemy. AI is the future, and how can we best help our kids be ready for the future? And a little thing in the bottom left there, over the summer, I became micro-credentialed in AI through the state, so.
Yay!
U.S. News and World Reports, 25/26 Best U.S. High Schools came out today. And you'll see when we do the school spotlights, at the beginning of October, we'll have the high school here. But out of over 24,000 high schools in the country, our high school was 722. We were 25th out of 903 in Ohio. We were eighth in the Cleveland, Ohio metropolitan area, and number one in Lorain County. And number two in Lorain County isn't even close to us. We were 25 in the state, number two was 47. So we are obviously very proud of that. We continue to move up each year in this ranking, and I'm a little proud, Papa, of our academic program here in the district, so.
Jack, does that include private schools? Because there's, I thought there were like 600 school districts in Ohio, but then you said 900 schools?
There, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So let's see, it makes it better when you factor in that we're all those rankings, including public and private high schools.
Other than that, we have science adoption up this year. And state also has a new requirement on math acceleration, but we already have all of the requirements for that in place because we've been doing those things, because those are good educational things. We've been doing those things here for a few years already. So with that, I am done, unless there's any questions.
I will bring up one thing that's not on your list, but the one thing that older students come and ask me about is what's going on with cell phones. And I know that there's been some stuff over the summer. I don't know if we have a little space just to talk about the legislation and kind of where we're at with that.
We can talk about it. It keeps changing every time we turn around. As you recall, last year, we had to have a policy in place by July 1 of this calendar year, and ultimately, it was to get stakeholders' opinions on what it could look like for your district. And then it went to, well, we're going to ban them for, you know, all schools. And then it went to, well, now we're going to ban it from bell to bell. But no one's defined bell to bell. So that comes into play January 1, so right in the middle of the school year. Love the timing. And so we're going to be working, we have to have a policy in place. We already have a policy in place in our adoption from last year, but it is going to be something that we will have to start enforcing on January 1 of this year. So we sent out something over the summer just to let parents know that this was coming, and we'll continue to send out memos so that we remind parents frequently that kids should not have phones. It's in school from bell to bell, which is, I've tasked our principals to come up with what is going to work in their buildings in terms of, like, we have a lot of kids here at the high school that are in extracurriculars after school. They don't go home to get their phone. So if they bring it to school, how are we going to keep it safe? Where is it going to be located? Because we can't say that they can't have them, especially if they have to be here after school for, you know, any number of their activities. So we're working through that. We will roll that out for our parents before that January 1 date.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms.?
That's a great question.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our public participation part of the meeting. Just as a reminder, public participation at board meetings is allowed, is permitted to allow individual members of public to address the board on issues of public concern, and is not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with the board members or district official. The primary role of the board is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes board members may respond or ask questions, but not always. Whether we respond or not, your input is valued. The public participation is for general comments on matters relevant to the school district, and those who wish to address the board must fill out a Carmont Card prior to the meeting. Each person will be given three minutes to speak until a total time of 30 minutes is used. Dr. D.B., do we have anyone?
We have one speaker, Natasha Beridge.
I think, Jack, primarily covered our question. So our question was just how many high school freshmen, like incoming freshmen, did you lose as a district this year to the surrounding private schools?
We'll have that data when we have our school report card. We're still processing that.
My other question is about the 5'8" middle school.
She also asked about the Avon Lake Electronic, and I should have pointed that out. Avon Lake Electronic are students that were responsible, they were listed as one of the schools there, and they've always been there. But those are for kids who are like Peterson Scholarship, or Murray Ridge, or are only counting for us because they're here for, they're private school, but they might be on one of our athletic teams or something, but they are somehow counting in our power school, and therefore, they're reported through EMIS, even though they don't count as a student in the seat. That's how they're in the electronic building.
Jack, just to kind of make sure that for the benefit of everybody listening, and I think your question is, I understand why you might be asking that, but maybe explain why it takes a little time because it's...
Oh, sure.
Just because we have someone leave doesn't mean they went to private school.
Correct. So, I mean, we do, we have a, I have an estimate of how many. Typically, the largest place where we lose kids is between 8th and 9th grade. And we do know, like, I believe it's probably in the 25 area this year, 25 to 30. But once we get all of the release of records and we have everything coded, with today being the first day of school, and we still have kids who are absent today that we don't know if they're here or not here and so forth, it takes some time to process through that. And then the state will send us, this is going to be a new thing on the state report card. I've already seen what it looks like. The state is going to now include a thing on the report card with how many kids from your district take the vouchers and which vouchers they take and things like that. So it's a pretty telling graphic, and I will definitely be able to give you more information about that in the next, when I do the state report card.
So my other question is about the community, the new school is, and I was thinking, I don't know whether it's generally, this is temporary, but we have a child that uses a wheelchair regularly. Is that being looked at about the overall, because obviously, a lot of the schools that were built 30, 40 years ago are not very accessible. And I think, especially as someone who has to live there every day, accessibility is such a huge thing, and people don't realize how inaccessible something is until they have to do it.
So the question, for those of you listening at home, was regarding the accessibility of the new building. And anytime you build a new building, you are required to make it ADA accessible throughout the building, as opposed to older buildings that are grandfathered in from that. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item is the approval and signing of our minutes. We had two meetings in June. We did not have a meeting in July. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 17th and from the June 26th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And as we move into the rest of the business agenda, the fact that we didn't have a meeting in July kind of contributes to a kind of a longer-than-normal treasure consent item, along with a lot of things going on with the building projects. So Autumn, I will let you take care of that, and we'll have to go through a number of individual discussion action items as well, once you're done with the first part.
Thank you. For your consideration, we do have the treasures consent items. The first item on the agenda is our regular monthly reports, so this will include both our June and July reports for the last two months. We do have a return of in advance, as well as a transfer on the agenda for tonight, the approval of appropriation amendments, and then-and-now purchase orders. It's all very normal business for us on a monthly basis. We have a few contracts related to some of our special education services, as well as we have the Monarch School, as well as the ESC of Northeast Ohio for audiology and hearing And then we also have the agreement with the ESC for achievement centers, which...
Yeah, we're going to request that you make an amendment to the agreement to, this consent to remove G. There was a, there was an error in the contract, so we wanted, we noticed it today, we want to pull it. So if you can consider that when she's done going through to amend the consent agenda about removing G. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Joelle. And then we also have an agreement with Phoenix Learning Center, the Ohio Substitute Teacher Services, and RITCHO. RITCHO is for a two-year period of time on the agenda. We have the agreement with Shared Services Alliance for this year. We also have a three-year agreement with Julian and Group for the preparation of our ACFER and GAP conversion. Again, all normal business for this time of year. The approval of our bus routes and bus stops, as well as approval of buses for school activities. And that's all of the treasures consent items.
Okay, so you, at first, would like a motion to amend the treasures consent items to remove item G, the agreement with the Educational Service Centers?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any other questions on the consent items? All right, can I have a motion to approve the treasures consent items as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we've got a long list of discussion action items. Item A.
It looks much longer than it actually is, because these resolutions are long, and we did itemize everything within the resolution. So our first item on for tonight would be our bond resolution to issue the bonds. So this would be to issue the bonds to build a new 5'8" middle school, as well as all the renovations for our existing elementary schools. We will be selling, we will be going to Moody's mid-September, and then selling the bonds on October 1st is what that's scheduled for.
In autumn, we are working with another group to help us with this process, right? At the last meeting, we approved, I can't remember the name of the group was helping...
Correct. We decided to employ a municipal advisor and enter into that agreement back in June. So they're assisting with us through that process and working with Stiefel Nicholas as well.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the authorization of the issuance of the bonds?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second item that we have is a resolution approving the second amended and restated suburban health consortium agreement. So again, all of the language is spelled out there, but just to highlight, some of these are just structural changes to how the suburban health consortium, or SHC as we refer to it, to some of the structure of how they're set up, due to their board of directors, the sizing of districts, the change in the fiscal agent. Orange City Schools was the fiscal agent for the entire consortium, and their treasurer did retire the end of June. So Orange has been the fiscal agent since the creation of the suburban health consortium. So Orange has decided that they're going to go ahead and pass that baton to another district within suburban health consortium. So this amended agreement also allows for that to occur.
So how many roughly, how many schools are in the consortium now?
17.
17, okay. And just as, to back up a bit of history, Avon Lake had a self-funded plan until probably 12 years ago or so, when it first was on the board. We decided to go to suburban health to spread our risk across other districts, and it was more favorable at the time to do that. So we have been at the same consortium over the last 10 to 12 years.
Correct. That's an excellent memory, Jim.
Any other questions on that resolution? All right, can I have a motion to approve the resolution to amend the agreement with suburban health consortium?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item C.
Item C is a resolution that we'll be taking, we have some existing payment in lieu of taxes or in-kind donations that we've received over the years, that we've deposited into a fund '19. This is a resolution authorizing, to give me authority to move that money into the general fund, that we will, we will be segregating for permanent improvement purposes.
Okay. Any questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve the resolution to allocate those payments?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, I think this might be where we call on our friend Dr. Lawver to talk about item D. Resolution with Roof Connect.
So, good evening. So I know, I know I sometimes, you know, take a little bit of time to explain some of these, but I think it's important for, to have the information out there for the community to understand some of the things that are going on with our roofs and our HVAC systems. And so I won't try to get too much in the weeds on this, but I'll try to give kind of a high-level summary of some of these items. So we need to continue to go around the district and replacing roof sections, particularly here at the high school. The high school will not be included in the renovations or the new construction, and so we have to keep our eye on the, you know, several hundred thousand square feet of roof that we have here at the high school. One section that has been leaking over the years and continues to drop water into hallways and classrooms is the section over the 19, the mid-1970s wing of the building behind us there, in the technology wing, in the freshman hallway. That's been a particularly problematic section for us over the last three or four years, probably time to do a project there. We also have an opportunity here, because there's a lot of HVAC cutouts in that roof that were there from the 70s, and like an air venting system, a lot of those, once the area of the building was repurposed, I think there was an auto shop back there at one point where the technology department is, over the wood shop and metal shop, there are all these cutouts that haven't been used. Some of them have been curved off, they've been sealed off, they're not that efficient. So we've got too many holes in our envelope there. So also probably an opportunity to correct that while we redo the roof. So this particular resolution is to do that via our membership in Equalis, which is a cooperative bidding group that allows us to have a little bit more control over that process and work through a cooperation of governments on that. And so using our Equalis membership, we worked through an outfit called Roof Connect in order to obtain, we had three competitive proposals come in on that, and we were able to select a firm that had the best proposal for us versus just necessarily being the cheapest. Some people submit proposals sight unseen. The folks that submitted this proposal have actually spent time on our roofs. And so the proposal not to exceed $491,563 will do all of what we call sections U and S over there. It's the entire section over wood shop, metal shop, there's a science classroom back there, Doc Williams's classroom back there, the technology department, and the journalism area over there on the southwest side of the building. So fairly large sections. It allows us to clean up those HVAC cutouts and have fewer cutouts. And they also, part of the proposal is a saddle system and a replacement of the roof hatch. The roof hatch is probably no longer OSHA compliant, so we need to take care of that. And the saddle system would allow that flat roof to be a little less flat and channel some water toward the drains to create some better drainage up there. So it's not just a relatively, not inexpensive, but it was nearly the lowest proposal that we had submitted, but it was also the right proposal and the right job that we need to do on those roof sections here at the high school. So that's kind of what we have going on there. And this, again, this agreement would be to take advantage of that pricing through Equalis to complete that project. Hopefully, completion by Halloween, by October 31st.
Ned, when you do a repair like this, obviously, there's a lot involved in it, but like, in your mind, do you kind of have a life expectancy when you're repairing a section? Like, is it 10 years, 15 years, maybe, before you might have to take that same section and look at it again?
Sure. Yeah, I think it depends on the style of roof. So I've, you know, you can look at a roof, we have some roofs at Learwood right now that aren't leaking, and they're from the 1980s. Some were, and we had to replace them. So I think it depends. Some of those are probably, you know, 20, 30, 40-year products that were put on there. We've just been lucky. Others are 20, 30, 40-year products that fail. Typically, on a roof replacement like this, you're looking to get 20 to 25 years out of them. That's the magic range for just about everything in facilities maintenance. We're fortunate that many of our roofs here at the high school have gone to 20, 25, we're pushing 30 on many of them here at the high school. And there is, usually, you want to match some of the style on the other sections of the roof. You don't want to try to mix and match styles. It's already hard enough to connect all the different sections of a building like this that has sort of been Frankenstein together since 1923. So on this particular building, you will see a little bit of a step above, like, I don't want to start naming products, but like a PVC-style product, I won't give a brand name, but you go kind of a little step above that to a more rubberized solution that does probably get you 20, 25 years, maybe 30 years on the high end. And we're just trying to go around this building in particular, especially on a day like this, right? And sort of rotate some of those, so we're not doing it all at once, but we are addressing some of those worst sections, so we don't have worse problems down the road.
Did we budget for this? Were we expecting a repair of this sort in that budget?
So we were, yes.
Yeah. Yep. We're trying to get those on a cycle and addressing the worst areas first. We've had all our roof sections scored, and we're trying to approach the sections that have...
Yeah, just I'm bringing it back, because my memory was serving me that we've, you've gone through an exhaustive list, we've forecasted much of that out, now you're just bringing the real dollars for consideration, having gone through the bid process.
That's correct.
And it will assist the resolution that the board previously passed tonight for the tax abatements that we have on our books. That's over $400,000 as well, that we can shift to the general fund to offset some of those costs.
Perfect, okay.
This is just another win of being able to pass the building construction for the new 5'8" building, because we take two more of these huge roof liabilities off of our books now by not having to focus on Learwood and Troy, as well as all the other buildings that we still have, so.
I really, really appreciate, from an operations standpoint, having clarity on the other buildings, because that in turn has freed up our ability to, you know, free up resources to address this building, and it's, you know, nearly 350,000 square feet.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution with Roof Connect?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next up, Gardner.
I'll be shorter on this one, hopefully. More brevity, right? Brevity is the soul of wit, right? So unfortunately, some of the things that we predicted four or five years ago when we were talking about facilities projects are now occurring, and they're occurring before we have a chance to get into the actual renovation. So this is one of them. We have a couple of quarter-century-old HVAC units on the roof at Redwood over the cafeteria and the kitchen area that have failed. They are using outdated refrigerant, which we can't get, and the repairs would be, I think it was something around 80, 85% the cost of replacement. So we started asking questions, and again, you know, main questions are, if we replace these now, and they do need to be replaced now, are we able to reimburse ourselves through the bond project and things like that? We asked a lot of questions on that. So suffice it to say, we have a project that we think we can get done with some parts and units in stock here, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, if this passes this evening. This is through a design-build contract through the Ohio Schools Council with Gardner. So that's one of the ways that you kind of navigate that process. They know our buildings, and it's a cooperative, a thing that was cooperatively bid by the Ohio Schools Council. So that's how we're compliant there. About $178,000 to replace the two units. But when we ask the question, can this be put on standalone thermostats and lump, and connected into the HVAC controls later on when we do the renovations? The answer is yes, so that's what we're going to do. And will these units be compatible with a new system so we don't have to redo it? The answer is yes. So we'll take these off of, off of the project. It'll be a one-for-one. And we do have legal ability after the bonds are sold, if we desire, to go ahead and reimburse ourselves for these two units from the bond, from the $20 million in renovations, should in renovations, should we choose to do so.
Great. I'm just going to say this, I say this every time, I am not related to these gardeners, so we just share the same last name. Sorry, Jennifer.
That's okay. So just to restate, to make it crystal clear, this entire project will feed in to the bigger plan with the renovations. We're not misusing, misspending, or band-aiding something we shouldn't be.
Correct. We are, we worked with these partners in particular because it will be able to be connected to the HVAC renovations that take place at Redwood.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So do all the elementaries have, the existing elementaries have similar HVAC systems for their kitchen, or they, is it kind of disparate?
No, actually, these are different because I believe this, the cafeteria and kitchen bumpouts at Redwood were done in a different era. They were all done around the same time, but different solutions are on the different buildings. So when you go to the different buildings, the offices are very similar with the type of like Mitsubishi mini-split systems they put in, but almost everything else either had different, just, just different solutions on them. So these were a couple of air handlers that were put on. That cafeteria space at Redwood is larger than the other elementary buildings, and it's a slightly different kitchen as well, so it was a slightly different solution. So that's, one of the unique challenges of being in this district is having to address different aged systems and different solutions that were grafted onto the buildings, you know, 15 years ago, 25 years ago.
Yeah.
When those other improvements were made. So this was, this failure was unique to Redwood, but I am concerned about the age and the failures that are occurring across all the buildings right now.
I guess, taking a larger sub view, more to your point, Jen, like, it, this just points to, if we did have a critical issue before we get to renovation, we at least have a, a way to potentially navigate that if it isn't budgeted already. Great.
Talk to me about the boiler system at Redwood for just a minute.
Well, there's, good news, bad news. The good news is we can lump the air conditioning in, in the cafeteria into the new project. The bad news is we need a new heat exchanger on a boiler at Redwood, so it's interesting that you, that you mentioned that, and that is probably not going, we are probably going to have to replace that entire system when we get into the renovations. So this is a little bit of a tough repair for us, because we're still waiting on some pricing. I think that's going to be about $30,000, but we have to have a boiler that's functional in that building for the winter. So we did look at the boilers at Redwood. I called it the worst boiler room in the district because it is a small room with stacked boilers, one on top of another. So we've had situations where the boiler on top fails, drips onto the boiler on the bottom and breaks it too. So that has happened, and, and we sort of, you know, we inherited that system that was built many, many years ago. So I did speak specifically with the architects and the construction firms that toured the buildings, and I said, whatever comes out of this, we need a creative solution to try to capture more space in that boiler room, get these boilers, you know, not be stacked on top of one another, and unfortunately, we just had another major failure on that system. The Redwood boiler system may be the worst boiler system in the district, and we're just out of time on these systems. So we'll patch it as best we can, and then we'll try to make the next decision we make at that building in the renovations, try to make it the right project by finding more space in there and putting them side by side.
Yeah, what you just said to me gives me zero comfort, because we will go from 80 degrees now straight into winter and a catastrophic failure, and winter is not going to be possible, and we all know that. So I guess I, I question why we don't proactively address things, and I know we're waiting on the construction firm, but you've given me no comfort, and not, not you, Ned.
I get it. I spent the night at Redwood once, I get it with the heating issue, so I understand.
Well, I mean, this just, again, points to the decision, like, when we did the building project, that we gave space for renovations beyond just the new construction, you know, because we knew that we, we, we need to solve the problem of consolidating buildings and building a new safe, safer 5-38 building, but we also had these other issues that are, they're all intertwined, right? So.
Yeah, I guess I'm just sitting here, my third year on the board, and this is the same conversation we've had about this boiler for three years. So I am concerned, probably Ned as as well, that we get into the winter, that boiler fails, and we are doing what with those kids? So I'm asking why there isn't a more proactive strategy to attack that now as part of this gardener exploration and call it what it is and take care of it. That's all I'm asking.
Sure, no, it, it's, it's a great question, and so the proactivity piece is trying to maintain them as best we can, trying to create repairs where we can. The, the real solution on that boiler, it's a, it's, I don't want to say a trap, but it's a, it's a situation that was set for us in 1962 when that building was built, and how those boilers were built into that building and the space that was allocated for them. And to solve that problem, to truly solve it, would have required, you know, way, way too much money prior to the bond issue, and as part of a comprehensive solution, because we've got to look at knocking out walls, we've got to look at creating space, we've got to look at the right boiler solution there, and unfortunately, that just for the last 70 years, 60 years, hasn't been possible because it requires construction. And while we have money for buses or for, you know, a replacement of some of our equipment, what we didn't have money for prior to the bond, and thank goodness, we're going to have this money from the bond and this renovation dollars, we did not have money to start knocking down walls, ripping out the roof, and re, reconfiguring what a building looked like without the $20 million in renovations. It just would have broken the budget.
And please take my remarks with a ton of gratitude also at the same time.
I do, your comments are well-founded, and, and I think they, they elucidate exactly the challenges we're dealing with on these older buildings and why we need this construction project.
Yeah.
So I'll add, why can't we be more proactive, like you're doing with the first example, knowing we're going into winter, and we're going to need heat, and if you have a catastrophic, catastrophic failure and we lose heat there, we have a major problem? So what would it take to advance a project using the creativity you did on the, the first one we just talked about?
So I think we need more space in those rooms. I'm not sure even high-efficiency boilers would work in those, in that space, if you've ever been over there. I don't know what the square footage of that closet is.
I've been in that room.
Yeah, it's very tiny.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that even a creative solution will work without us looking at expanding that space, whether it's into the garage area or taking space from somewhere else. That's why I need the architect and the construction folks to kind of guide me on that. We have had the boiler fail there before. The good news is that building can operate on one boiler. The challenge is if both get knocked out. I have spent the night there when we've had boiler failures and we've had space heaters running as a temporary solution in rooms. It's not pretty, but we can keep the building limping along until a repair can be made, and that's sort of, you know, how we've been functioning moving into this particular project, because we are going to need to look at knocking out walls and looking at a different solution.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that just putting in, technology can sometimes be a solution for that, like a low-space, high-efficiency boiler system. Maybe, I'm not convinced that that'll work over there right now without talking to the experts.
Okay.
Well, Ned, I appreciate your thoughtfulness on the matter. Like, yeah.
Appreciate it.
I haven't been in that room, but it sounds.
That's where the brooms are. I've been in there.
Okay.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the resolution for the procurement of the design build with Gardner Services?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Magavina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item F, construction manager.
So we completed our process of identifying our construction manager at risk. We had interviews last week, all firms that came, presented to us, and then were scored according to the state rubric, and so this is the resolution to employ Green Space Construction to be our construction manager for our project.
I just want to point out, we had two board members participate in that process.
We did. Thank you, Jennifer and Mike, for participating.
Yep.
And the conversation.
And the, the term "construction manager at risk," that, that means they're going to give us, or when we put together this budget, it's a maximum price, almost a not-to-exceed amount, and then they're at risk if any overruns go above that.
So construction manager at risk means that none of the liability are, do we have right now during the course of the construction project. So what that means is when schools do a design-build and they have to build a construction project by themselves, we're required by law to take lowest bid. So sometimes lowest bid, though, isn't always the best company or the best product for our, for our job. By going with a construction manager at risk model, which is allowable by the, by the state of Ohio for schools, the construction manager takes on that responsibility, so they can bid the project for us, because they are not mandated necessarily to take lowest bid. So then it gives a little bit of freedom and choice to say, we like this company's work, they may not have been the lowest bid, but we want to spend the money here, maybe we take the lowest bid on somebody else. Whereas if we were doing a different model, like design-build, we would be required to take lowest bid. And so they, the, the construction manager assumes all liability, they, for their trades, for the companies that they choose for those products, and it doesn't fall on the school district. It is, just to be completely clear, it's a little bit more of an expense to build this way, but it's a safer way for our school district to protect our taxpayer dollars.
Anything else from your perspective as the board members involved in those meetings, just to share?
Nope.
Very collaborative process.
Absolutely. We're confident, everybody. We all selected the same firm, so that was good.
That's good to know.
Great. All right, could I have a motion to approve the construction manager at risk firm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Magavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item G.
So this is a contract, a resolution to authorize a contract for TDA for the design services for our building, then-design architect is TDA, it's our architect that we had been working for with pre-bond, we had a contract with them, now post-bond, this is their design services. These dollars are, come out of the bond proceeds, so the resolution that you're passing is just to say you're going to enter in an agreement for this amount of money once the bonds sell.
Okay. So is it possible that we could have savings from that amount?
You could, depending on, it's, so it's, it's, again, it's not to exceed that amount?
Yeah, okay. All right, and TDA is the firm that we used for the pre-bond?
Correct.
But not the first go-round?
Not the first go-round, the pre-bond work on this particular project.
Yeah. Any questions on that? Can I have a motion to approve the authorization for TDA as our design service contract?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Magavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that was a lengthy treacherous report. Thanks for going through all those, everyone. Next, we'll move on to super-ten's consent items.
Okay. I have yet another amendment to ask you to make to the agenda.
Okay, sure.
I think we, we lost some stuff not having a July meeting, so I apologize for these late entries. So Autumn has these written, I'm going to read them, but I, she's got them captured. So first, we'd like to add two more donations to letter F, the Friends of the Schools, a donation from the Avon Lake Athletic Boosters in the amount of $8,283.33, and, and a donation made by Mr. Steve Conway in the amount of $3,000. Both those donations went to fund new benches for our soccer team. We'd also like to add to certified personnel, two resignations that were, were received in July, so again, we had our meeting in June and did not have a meeting in July. One would be the resignation of Sharon Sparks, Intervention Specialist, effective July 8th, and the second resignation would be for Chloe Stewart, effective July 2nd. It was a teacher in our district. And the last amendment to make to this is a current item that is on there, Alana Hagan. We had her listed as, it's under classified personnel. We had her listed as a Level 2 at, to, at a rate of 1704 an hour. It needs to be amended to a Level 1 and 1727 an hour. So with those, can you make a motion for those amendments, and then we can go through?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, can I have a motion to make those amendments to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Magavina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Okay. So now we have some certified personnel recommendations, our classified personnel recommendations, God bless you, Jack, some athletic supplemental contracts, some building supplemental contracts. This is all just normal time of year that we approve all of these. Some salary changes due to additional hours of people taking some additional courses, the list of donations, our Friends of Schools, and some leaves of absences for this particular school year. And, oh, sorry. H to approve an amendment to my contract, Learwood's eighth-grade travel to Washington, DC, again, a yearly trip. The changes to the modifications to the school handbooks, we had some updates since the last time that you had seen those. And they approved the changes and modifications of the exempt employee handbook, we had some changes that occurred over, in that handbook, that is the, that would encompass the ladies that work in our central office. The appropriations for the Avon Lake Public Library, as you know, we're, we are their fiscal agent, so that is from them. And to approve a, an agreement to establish an internship for a Stratton College for Occupational Therapy Assistant Program. And we have a couple amendments to a previously approved board item.
Pretty normal business with all the shuffling of people coming and going at the start of the school year. Any questions on those items? Can I have a motion to approve the super-ten's consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Magavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have one discussion-action item.
So this is transportation in lieu of each year, if we, we have kids that live in our district, that we can deem that transportation is not practical for us to provide, either because we don't have drivers, or there might be only one child going to a certain school, and we can approve to, to, that it's impractical, and then those families will get a payment from us that we will authorize later on in the year. So this is just the resolution declaring that, that transportation is impractical for these particular schools for this year.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution declaring transportation impractical?
So moved.
Second. Roll, please.
Mrs. Magavina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries. I was going to give you that one, Mike.
Hey, I'm, it's been a long day. She can have it.
All right, Ms. Magavina, anything else that you'd like to cover today?[1700.33]